Welcome to the March eighth, two thousand and twenty-one Select Board Meeting. Please note that in accordance with the emergency orders announced by Governor Charlie Baker, this Select Board Meeting will not be open to the public for physical attendance, and the Select Board members are meeting online via Zoom Web Conference. This meeting is being livestreamed and cable broadcast by the Eastern Community Access Television, and that's Comcast ninety-eight or Verizon twenty-three, and on ECAT's website at www.eastoncat.org. If you're watching at home and you have a question or a comment, you can email Michael Blanchard at mblanchard@easton.ma.us or pose your question on the Q and A feature of the Zoom portal. Please remember to include your name and street address for our minutes. At this time, I'd like to ask each Select Board member to state their name to ensure we have a quorum.
Craig Barger.
Tom Broussard.
Charles King.
Mark Lamb.
And Dottie Fulgenetti. Great, thank you, everyone. So our first item on the agenda is discussion and response to an open meeting law complaint filed by Patrick Higgins dated February twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-one, regarding the February twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one Select Board Meeting on file with the town clerk. Let me see, hold on one second. There are some notes in here that says, "Per the Attorney General's instructions, a border committee who receives an open meeting complaint must take the following steps. The public body must meet to review the complaint within fourteen business days. After the, after review but within fourteen business days, the public body must respond to a complaint in writing and must send the Attorney General's Office a copy of the complaint and a description of any action the public body has taken to address it. At the same time, the body must send the complainant a copy of the response." This complaint alleges that the board members were not properly introduced at the beginning of the meeting. We had town council review that. They are going to send a letter back to the AGO and to the complainant, as I just noted above, and we are disputing this claim. So we do introduce our board members at the beginning of every meeting. And if somebody would like to make a motion to, to accept the letter that was drafted in your packet by our attorney to send out, I would take a motion and a second.
I move that we authorize the council to send the letter that we have in our package to Mr. Higgins.
I second that. Broussard?
Barger, Broussard, and Craig, back to you for the vote.
Barger, yes.
Broussard, yes.
King, yes.
Lamb, yes.
And Fulgenetti, yes. Thank you. So for the second item, Public Spaces Committee Appointment, it's uncontested. We have Megan Montoya for a term expiring June of two thousand and twenty-three. And the, the application is also in our packet. If somebody would like to make a motion to appoint Megan?
Dottie, I'm sorry to interrupt. I do think Megan may be here and being moved into the panel. Her camera and microphone are off, but I believe she's here.
All right, if somebody wants to.
Hi.
Oh, Megan.
Hello.
Sorry, I didn't see you. I didn't see you, sorry about that. Nice to meet you and thank you for joining the meeting tonight. How are you today?
Thank you, I'm doing well.
That's great. You want to tell us a little bit about yourself and what your interest is in the Public Spaces Committee?
Um, yeah, so I've, I've been a resident of Easton for about seven years. I'm an attorney. I work mostly in real estate and construction. I've got two, two kids in the Easton schools, and I think, more recently, I've been trying to get more involved just in the community and kind of get back to, kind of prior to having kids, I had a lot more, you know, volunteer opportunities and some kind of looking to get kind of back out and be involved. And kind of what I kind of liked about this committee was, you know, I'm interested in preservation and conservation and had anything to do with kind of like the land and old buildings and such. So I'm kind of interested to see what, you know, where this would go and I'm thankful for the opportunity.
Okay, great. Well, we really appreciate any new faces volunteering, and I appreciate you sharing all of your interests with us because now that we know what your interests are, when things pop up, we know who to go to if, if there's other opportunities that may be of interest in addition to this. Any questions from the board on, on the Public Spaces?
I was going to ask, hi Megan, it's Craig Barger. I was going to ask about what, what, what kind of law you practice, but you, you stole my thunder when I was trying to, I was going to ask that question. But you practice in Easton or surrounding towns or, or where?
I'll come all over the place. I, prior to Easton, I worked for a, an office in, he was in Stone, actually now he's in Sharon doing conveyancing. And then when I had my oldest son, I went out on my own. So I work, I work from home and then I have kind of a couple of friends that let me use their space. And so I kind of work all over the, and I've got stuff out in Middlesex, and I have some things to share in Hampton County, so I'm kind of all over, kind of all over the place.
Thank you for answering. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Tom?
I have no questions, but just wanted to express my appreciation, Megan, for you reaching out and showing an interest in getting involved in our awesome community.
Thank you.
Tom?
I'm happy to see your public spirit, Megan, and welcome.
Thanks. Thank you.
And how are you?
Hello.
Uh, welcome to serving in this wonderful community. The Public Spaces, there's a lot of public spaces in town. There's a lot of open space in town, so you have your work cut out for you. And thank you for stepping up and thank you for serving.
Thank you. Nice to meet you all, too.
Great, and we look forward to working with you. So if somebody would like to make a motion and a second, and it's a roll call vote, and this would be to appoint Megan Montoya to the Public Spaces Committee for an appointment with the term expiring June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three.
So moved, Barger.
Second, Broussard?
It's Barger, Broussard, and back to you, Craig, for the roll call.
Barger, Montoya?
Broussard, Montoya.
King, Montoya.
Lamb, Montoya.
And Fulgenetti, Montoya. So congratulations, Megan, and the town clerk's office will reach out to you with instructions on how to get sworn in and when the next meetings are.
That sounds great. Thank you, thank you very much.
All right, have a good night.
You, too.
Good night.
Good night.
So next on the agenda, we have a project update for the Blanche Ames Elementary School MSBA project schedule.
Sure, so for our staff's benefit, because there's a large amount of people and the attendees, I'm just going to pick a few of them, and if we don't get all of them to be moved into the panel, they will let us know. So if we can move Chad Crichton in from PMA, Jane Martin, and Dr. Cabral, as, and we'll check if Walter's coming as well, but I know those three at a minimum.
Walter is there also?
No, I meant, I, I don't know if Walter's planning on speaking, so, so we don't have like mega Brady Bunch with twenty-five people. I'll defer to our three speakers. If I know we have Dan and others from Perkins Eastman as well. Was this the plan, the three of you for the update?
It is, yep. I can run through quickly, Connor, and then if there are any questions, Dan's on to, to answer any design-related questions, but if you'd like, I can.
Yeah, why don't you take us away for an update on where we are with the, the school building project?
Certainly, thank you. So good evening, everybody. Thank you for having us back tonight. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Chad Crichton. I am the Town of Easton's owner's project manager. Tonight, we have some welcome news regarding the bid results for the Easton Blanche Ames Elementary School to share with you. Uh, so the bid process for this project started last November. We issued a request for qualifications that goes out to all subcontractors who typically perform this work, general contractors and select trade contractors. We call them sub bidders. This is all prescribed in the Massachusetts, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter one forty-nine bidding statute. So under that, we established a pre-qualification committee. That committee consists of two members from the community and one member from the architect, one member from the owner's project manager. Uh, we solicited and received statements of qualifications from well over a hundred contractors and trade contractors that were interested in bidding on the project. Pre-qualified bidders were then invited to bid on the project earlier this year, and on February twenty-third, we opened general bids for the project. So the project had an estimated construction cost of approximately seventy-four million dollars, and we received six pre-qualified general contractors' bids for the project. One great thing is the three bids were within, three low bids were within one and a half percent of each other, so it shows us that we have a very good, tight set of drawings and specifications. Fast forward a week or so, and just this past week, on March third, the school planning committee met to review the results. Uh, they discussed those results and ultimately ended up providing a unanimous vote of approval to recommend that an award be made to Break Builders Corporation for an amount of sixty-three million, six hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, five hundred and thirty-seven dollars. So just under ten, just over, I'm sorry, ten million dollars in savings on, on this, this portion of the work. Uh, so looking forward, once an award is made and the contract has been executed, the contractor will obtain necessary state and local permits and mobilize to the site within a matter of weeks. The contract requires that the new building itself be substantially complete by October of two thousand and twenty-two and ready for occupancy in January two thousand and twenty-three after students return from their December break. Once the new school is vacated, it will be, the, once the old school is vacated and new students are in the new school, the old school will then be abated and demolished to make way for final site improvements, which include parking, driveways, and recreation areas. Final completion of that phase of the work is anticipated to occur during the spring of two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, at this time, we are seeking a vote of approval from Easton Select Board for the town to execute the agreement with the Break Builders Corporation, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. And we also have members from the school law and the architects, so.
So Craig, you want to go first?
Yeah, thank you, Dottie. Hi, Chad. I had a question. Can you just walk me through pre-qualification, what that means and how you go about doing that?
Yep. Um, so pre-qualification, we posted in the central register and a local newspaper in the Goods and Services Bulletin, and we, we essentially tell these contractors that they're, we have a project coming out to bid. Any project that's over a million and a half in value needs to have a, a pre-qualification, actually, maybe ten million in this instance. We receive those statements of qualifications, so they provide their management experience, their similar project experience, legal proceedings, a whole host of, it's all statutory forms that they need to submit. Uh, they submit those to the pre-qualification subcommittee, and the pre-qualification subcommittee goes through each one of those packages from a hundred and twenty-something contractors in Easton's case. And they score each of the packages in each of the statutory categories and assign a number of points. Any contractor that receives the minimum number of points required is invited to bid on the project, and then any contractor that does not meet the minimum, uh, is informed that they are, did not meet the minimum criteria to, to place a bid.
Todd, could you just say who's on the pre-qualification committee, just so that folks know who was on that committee?
Yes, in, uh, Easton, it was.
David Twombly.
David and Ken, right?
And Ken, yes.
Yeah.
Ken Wood, uh, some members of the school planning committee and school administrator, not Wood, sorry, gone.
Carlson.
And it's Ken Carlson. And that, that's a substantial investment of time, right?
It is, yep.
But, and they work with, with PMA as project managers to basically go through the statutorily required submittals to make sure that, uh, there's basically a pre-screening process before people are even allowed to submit a, a bid, right?
Correct.
We're, we're responsible, are that, those people were responsible for establishing pre-qualification, or is that a standard that they have to reach in order to be able to bid?
It's a standard they have to reach in order to bid. The standard itself is defined by the statute, so it's, it's not something that, uh, the town has very much control over. It's, it's very much prescribed under the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter one forty-nine statute.
Thank you, Chad.
Tom?
First, I'd like to acknowledge, Connor, that we should all have Ken Wood in the Easton food pantry on our mind. That is never a bad thought. I, I just wanted to point out, I think I wanted to illustrate for the audience and anybody that might hear this, a little bit of the process and then ask a question at the end chat. But we, through this process, the way it works legally is that we must go with the lowest responsive ineligible bidder through this process, and I noticed that there was a bid that happened to have come in lower from CTA construction managers. But we did not go with that. We went with the next lowest bid from Break Builders. Could you just speak a moment on the reasoning why we did not go with the lowest bid in this particular instance?
Certainly. Um, so in this particular instance, when we open those bids, we go through a due diligence process. So we're pulling the file from the Department of Capital Asset Management Maintenance. Uh, we're also, with their bid submission, they submit something called a DCAM update statement. So DCAM qualifies and certifies these contractors to bid on a certain value of, a certain project of a certain, up to a certain limit. From the time they submit their application to DCAM to the time they submit the bid, they're required to disclose anything that new that's happened on their update statement. So in the case of the low bidder, what we had found through a, our due diligence efforts was that there are a number of administrative and legal proceedings that were not disclosed on the DCAM update statement. So we requested an explanation from the low bidder. They provided that explanation. Out of the cases that we had questioned, one of them was just a clear omission. They missed it. Two of them, they had provided the email to DCAM, but they did not appear to be in DCAM's record anywhere. And then two of them had been dismissed, um, but in consulting with the Attorney General's Bid Protest Union, they still should have been included because they're, it's new information from the time of their last renewal application. Uh, so we presented this all in tremendous detail to the school planning committee, and the school planning committee, uh, decided to go with the number two, who is the lowest responsible and eligible bidder.
Yeah, I absolutely would agree with the, with the assessment, and I appreciate the due diligence done. And I think, as you pointed out, the differential between the three lowest bids was, was very close, and credit to the process and to the planning and to the efforts that your team put in to enable those potential bidders to, um, really come in with a sharpened pencil. Uh, and it's nice to know that Break Builders, um, you know, was very close from a cost perspective and didn't have any of those other challenges, uh, that you folks and your due diligence found out. So credit to you and the team for, uh, working hard to get to the right place. That, that's all I had, Dottie.
Thanks, Tom. Chuck? You're on mute.
I have no questions at this time, Bill.
All right, thanks, Chuck. Mark?
Uh, well, congratulations to everybody involved in this. This is obviously a huge milestone to be at this point, asking for approval for sixty-three million dollars. You know, years of work have gone into getting to where we are today. So, um, I mean, congratulations to everybody. This is incredible. Are there, are there renderings that we can see, that the public can see? And how much is, is designed out, or what's left to be designed? You know, what, what are we going to be looking at?
Dan, are you still in the line? Do you want to handle that?
If you'd like, we can move Dan Colley into the panel. He's on our architect team.
And, and then I'd like to maybe have, after Dan goes, maybe just ask Alicia real quickly to talk about, we have talked about at a project team level about how we kind of get this, all of this information and what's been happening, um, out to the community at large, so they know about all the exciting things to come. So maybe after Dan, Alicia could maybe talk for, Dr. Cabral could talk for a minute or two. I know what sort of time.
Sure, I can answer the, some part of the question. There's nothing left to design, so we're, we're, we're basically, we're at a hundred percent designed. We, uh, we do have more renderings. There's actually renderings that are still in process because there, there was an ask that we create kind of a end-of-project, beginning-of-construction presentation set or a set of drawings that we could, you know, basically share with the community so they could see where we're at and where, where we landed right now, and we're working on those currently. Those will kind of zoom into some of the more, um, some of the aspects of the project that, that weren't really shown in detail before, like playgrounds on the outside, some of the community spaces, and probably centering around the ramp and the whole Blanche Ames, part of the, part of the project in and of itself.
So if I could just follow up to that, uh, as Jane requested, we, we as a, a committee are working on a smaller level to put together a presentation to get the, get the community up to speed on the design elements to date. It is, um, very difficult for some people to perhaps visualize many of the things that have been described in great detail. And so we are working on a presentation to really share some very exciting visuals, so people can see all of the things that we have been working on, uh, throughout this past year in addition to all of the work that you heard with the bids, and finally getting, uh, our general contractor on board, hopefully this evening. We have continued our work with some, uh, young ladies from Oliver Ames and recent graduates from Oliver Ames, who met with the design team across the country and worked together to really provide them with some feedback from, um, from a student-user perspective and gave them some phenomenal, um, advice and, um, some feedback on some elements they thought were fitting tributes to the Town of Easton and also to Ms. Blanche Ames. And so we, um, are having a follow-up meeting with the designers so that the students can see what the, uh, designers have put together as a result of that feedback, and we look forward to sharing all of that with the community. I just need to add before, um, before I get the hook here that we are exceedingly grateful, proud, um, for the work that both PMA and Perkins Eastman have done. You heard a very small amount this evening about how much has gone into the design, but also the due diligence in this process, the advice that they have given us as true laypeople in a good portion of this work is, um, is beyond measure. It is, it is a wonderful feeling to know that we are in good hands, that everything will be explained in great detail, that we will literally be led by the hand through every pro, uh, process and procedure, and all of our questions would be answered in very timely and complete manner so that we can make informed decisions like the general contractor award. So I just want to shout out again to them. We are, um, extremely grateful for, uh, their leadership throughout this process and for the community's support as we continue. We look forward to sharing the designs, uh, and we'll have that information out as soon as possible.
And if, if, for thirty seconds, the one thing that I'd like to add is thanks in addition to obviously PMA and Perkins Eastman and the school planning committee, is the fact that, um, throughout particularly probably last summer and into the fall, we held a, through PMA and, and Perkins again, a lot of user focus groups. So, so I really feel like this project has done a really good job of reaching out broadly throughout the community, getting input from educators, getting input from community members, getting input from other critical town departments in this process. And so I'd like to just offer my thanks for folks who participated in that work.
Thanks. And so for my comments, I'll say you had a million dollars in savings, and what I would say is, um, from being on this, um, committee, every single tiny little detail and, and, you know, down to the penny was evaluated and really conservative and really thoughtful choices, things that I never, you know, would have imagined, that we would be looking at and talking about, and, you know, everything from energy to universal design to talking about how do, you know, our little people get to the second floor safely? And how, how does somebody with mobility issues get around that school? And the layout and the functionality, and, um, you know, like it was said before, you know, who's going to be using it specifically? What do the community pieces look like? What do the, the outdoor learning and science? And I mean, it was just such an incredible process. And, you know, Mark, you were on, on the school planning committee a couple of years ago when it was still like an idea. It, it just feels like the process has been really so comprehensive. No stone was left unturned on this, and, um, I'm really grateful to all the people that were involved in it, and especially to the, to the people in the town that so overwhelmingly supported this. And I'm so excited for our, our little kids that are going to be able to use this. So it, it's going to come up quickly. I mean, you know, making these decisions now and then, you know, less than two years, it's going to be substantially complete. So, um, it's a very exciting time for Easton, and everybody should, um, really think about what this means for our community. It's really, really something special. So thank you to everyone that was involved. And thank you to everyone that bid on this project. For some of the subcontractors that I looked at, many of them, um, appear to be local, and there's a couple from Easton, and that makes me really happy. So being able to do a project like this and keep, to keep the money in our community is, is really important to keep the jobs in our community. This is really going to be very good for our, for our economic purposes as well. So, um, thanks again. And if nobody has any other comments, I would take a motion to award the contract, the construction contract to Break Builders Corporation?
So moved, Barger.
Second, Broussard?
It's Barger, Broussard. Back to you, Craig?
Barger, yes.
Broussard, yes, with appreciation.
King, yes.
Lamb, yes.
And Fulgenetti, yes. Thanks for being here tonight, everyone, and, um, looking forward to the next steps.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
So next, we have a discussion and vote for contract amendment number two with Beta Group for a design of, of roadway improvements for the Depot Street corridor, DPW two thousand and twenty dash oh-three.
Sure, so DPW Director Dave Field is here. I think he's being moved into the panel now. There's a memo in the board's packet associated with this, uh, design amendment, that's relatively self-explanatory. DOT is required for additional changes to the contract associated with the Depot Street tip job. So we need to amend the design contract to meet DOT's requests. Dave, any, anything I?
No, you, you summed it up quite well. Thank you.
And while, while you're here, you just want to give a timing update on the tip project for the board? And so we have a school, uh, being built, uh, this tip project on Depot Street starts when?
We'll know that soon. We have a pre-construction meeting this week. We have a contractor on board, RJV. They signed a contract with the Mass DOT who is actually running the project. We designed it, and we're going to be involved with it integrally, but it's still a Mass DOT project. We'll have more information after, uh, the pre-construction meeting and the contractor furnishes a schedule to the town, and we'll be disseminating that information, uh, in a variety of ma, a variety of ways, uh, shortly, this, the next month.
So that's great, and RJV Construction is from Canton, Mass. So again, um, you know, more, more jobs and investment coming, coming into our region. So very happy to see that as well. Does anyone have any, um, questions on this?
One question, David. Is this standard for the DOT to keep asking for design changes, et cetera, so that the town keeps paying more money for?
It, it is, um, you know, the, Mass DOT has a job that they're trying to do. These design changes were driven around utilities, and they're just trying to, be proactive so we don't have issues later on in construction. It was a little bit frustrating. It's a long project. It started designing this in two thousand and twelve. And so personnel at Mass DOT changed many times during the whole review process. So we would continually come into a question about X, Y, or Z. We'd already addressed that three years ago. So it is frustrating, but it's a large project, and the benefit that we're getting, over ten million dollars in construction, is well worth the investment in design. So again, I, I echo the frustration a little bit, but it's still, uh, definitely a, a great benefit for the town.
I agree. Thank you, David.
Any other comments, questions?
I have none.
All right, if somebody would like to make a motion to, um, award contract amendment number two with Beta Group for design of roadway improvements on the Depot Street corridor, DPW two thousand and twenty dash oh-three, in the amount of thirty-nine thousand dollars?
So moved, Barger.
Second, Broussard?
Barger, Broussard?
Barger, yes.
Broussard, yes.
King, yes.
Lamb, yes.
And Fulgenetti, yes. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
You, David?
Thank you, David.
Thank you, David.
All right, um, next, we have a discussion and vote on a memorandum of understanding regarding Sawmill Village Compact Neighborhood on Foundry Street.
Sure, so attached in the packet from the board, uh, you will find a memo of understanding with Sawmill LLC relating to the proposed, uh, compact neighborhood on Foundry Street that Rick Lincoln is developing. By way of background, uh, this project's been working its way through the special permit process for the Planning and Zoning Board for more than a year now, following town meetings rezoning of this area to allow, uh, the slightly denser, to be. Uh following uh town meetings rezoning of this area to allow uh the slightly denser development of um a compact uh neighborhood. Um although the planning board is the permitting uh authority for this, uh part of that process uh under the chair Greg Strange's uh leadership is looking at the mitigations of a project and working to anticipate those. Some of those get uh addressed through conservation. Some of those get addressed through uh site layout with planning and others um that have direct uh contractual value come to the select board as you're the chief uh executive board and that's what's in your packet tonight. So what this agreement includes are some pretty um key mitigations uh for the community, particularly around traffic. Um for the Sawmill uh project in the Foundry and Paquonicet intersection, specifically the MOU uh binds the developer to design and construct uh intersection improvements at Foundry and Paquonicet Street. Uh uh including a traffic signal, which I think uh people will be pretty happy uh to see. That's something that has been needed there for quite some time. Um and that meets the needs not only of Paquonicet and Foundry, but also the the forthcoming entrance to the Sawmill uh Village. Um that'll be designed and constructed at a developer's cost uh with uh review and approval by Public Works uh before being turned over to the town for its operation. Uh additionally, this MOU uh in incorporates approximately three hundred and eighty thousand dollars of design funds to be contributed. Uh we just were talking about the Depot Street tip where, you know, about six hundred seven hundred thousand in design funds has yielded ten million in state and federal dollars. Uh this is a three hundred and eighty thousand dollar contribution of design funds for Public Works to get twenty five percent design plans off the ground for the entire Foundry Street corridor for a long term investment in that uh area of town. Um consistent with the master plan and the charrettes that we've held in that area that would get the town uh started on the usually five to ten plus year process of getting in line for those federal dollars for major roadway improvements, sidewalks, bike lanes. Um if you know, works, not necessarily, you know, bike lanes there. You have to design it first, but you 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 know the drill. Uh so that's uh another uh major uh component of this. Um I would be remiss uh not to to recognize and note that uh Greg Strange um has been instrumental in this process. Uh not only for the role the planning board has for zoning amendments that go to town meeting. Um but also in identifying the uh helping uh identify these appropriate mitigations uh to offset, you know, the traffic impacts and concerns in that area. Um he's been working um on this for many, many, many years. So it's been uh great to work with him and and Dottie uh the planning department on that. So um I'm happy to take questions about the MOU. I I recommend uh the board vote to approve it.
And so this is just a vote on uh the MOU, the project still before the planning board and the Conservation Commission. Um just just as a reminder that they need to still obtain the necessary approvals and permits before getting to construction. That's not something this board votes on. We just, you know, like Connor said at the beginning, this is just to to vote on the memorandum of understanding. Um any comments or questions, Craig?
No, I have none.
Tom?
I would just say I think this is a great example that illustrates the partnership that the town has with developers and trying to work collaboratively with all the departments. I would echo Connor's comments about the importance of uh folks like Greg Strange and their teams and certainly Connor, our teams and credit you, Dottie, with leadership. Um but I genuinely think that this is an excellent example of trying to make sure we develop smartly and that we try to as a town ensure uh we understand what the impacts to our community would be. And I think these memorandums of understanding go a long way towards helping mitigate any of those impacts and and it's really thoughtful um growth and I just give a tremendous amount of credit to all those that are involved.
Thanks, Tom. Chuck?
I'm happy to see the progress made in this area and I uh agree with what Tom said.
Thank you. Mark?
Uh yeah, excellent work by everyone. Um now, you you may have touched on it in in uh when you spoke, Connor, but what could you tell me a little bit more about the timeframe uh of the intersection? I know you have, you know, design and and all that, but so I mean, anytime there's a state route. Uh and again, you may have already said this, but anytime there's a state route, it takes forever. So how, what are we looking at for time?
Um I don't have an answer for the exact date on construction.
Obviously.
So uh the 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 agreement stipulates that the developer would have to make reasonable efforts to get these designs. Um there's a rough concept in your packet, but to get those to final construction design um in enough time so that they can be accepted um by town meeting uh this May. So ambitious.
Yeah, they're too very ambitious, but I like their uh tenacity on that.
Right. And that was um, we actually flagged that as potentially too aggressive and the developer said, you know, obviously the language is soft enough. It says reasonable efforts. We're not gonna, we're not gonna go to court if they don't meet it. Um I think it it demonstrates that they're they're trying to move um quickly on this. A lot of it's going to be contingent on the timing of permitting with Concom and Planning Board. Uh obviously, none of us is really going to hit the ground until those permits are in hand. Uh so I I think they're they're working diligently on that. They've been, they have been for a very long time. This is a complicated project um from a wetlands perspective. But I I believe it's supposed, you know, if if those boards approve it, it would be, I I assume the spring, but that's up to them, not me.
Do you think like, I I know that um you know, Concom and uh they have, they still work to be done. Um is it? Would this be done concurrently while the project is going on? Is that possible? Or would they would they think like, oh, you know, we can't do both these at the same time. Uh it's too cumbersome in that area and too congested to actually have two things, you know, a a design change for an intersection and the project at the same time?
Uh mention. So um I didn't get into that all with detail. I think that'd be more of a permitting um decision for planning board, but this intersection improvement is required in order for the entry to the completed neighborhood to function, basically.
Okay, right.
So I would, I would assume those things would line up. Um.
Good. Sorry. I I mean, if my questions seem a little crazy or off the wall.
No, no, they're perfectly good questions. I'm just being honest on my own lack of granular knowledge on some of that. Um.
I'm just picturing the logistics of that quarter and a co- construction project like that going on. And can that occur while an intersection's be being created? And should intersection be created before the project occurs so as to make everything smooth? I was just probably getting ahead of myself a little bit, but.
No, they're they're good questions, but that's that's part of why um the it it's stipulated right in agreement of the developer has to work directly with DPW on that so that they can try to line those things up in a way that makes best sense. And just for the folks in that district hearing major construction, they're probably gonna say, oh, is this guy kidding? Uh to be clear, the intersection, these are, this is not like a ten million dollar intersection job that's gonna, you know, it's, this is, these are some modest improvements and part of the goal is that these are good enough improvements to result in a noticeable improvement in traffic in the area, but it it's not a a full redesign, rebuild of Foundry Street. That's what that tip money is for many, many years from now. So this this should not be, you know, the level of disruption anywhere near sewer construction or anything like that. Um just wanna be.
That that brings up a question for me, Connor, is you said we're hopeful is that that it'll be before the town meeting in May. Does that mean that we don't have to go to the DOT to get permission to do this? This is something we can just do uh in terms of the intersection? Since it's one oh six, it's a state road, is that?
I I I'm not sure about Dave Field is here. I think uh Dave, I need a a lifeline.
Check it out too early.
Phone a friend, Connor.
Dave, can you just walk through a little bit of this? I know that some state roads, we need a lot of permits and approvals from others. We don't. It depends on what type of state road, what? Can you just walk us through what this process looks like?
Sure. So Foundry Street is a state numbered route only. It's not a state road. It's a town road. So we actually have control over that. Um as long as it meets acceptable engineering practices and warrants and things like that. Um we can go ahead and do the work. So tha- that's not a problem.
Thank you for saving me, Dave. I might as well just stay there for the next few items.
Can I say, hang on, Dave?
Nobody has all of the answers. That's impossible.
So this is great. Again, you know, it just feels like yesterday we were all sitting down at the um Richardson Olmsted School and looking at a charrette for in asking people, what do you envision for this area in the next, you know, ten, twenty, fifty years? And there was a lot of public feedback on this and you know, one of the things that um people commented on is, you know, what what will the impact be to the traffic? What what will the impact be to that area um with Paquonicet? And so it's really nice to see that, you know, these these questions and and solutions are all part of long term planning and um I did, I really congratulate um everybody involved in this, particularly Greg Strange and the planning department and um you know, Stephanie Danielston and Andrea, um the Conservation Commission. And the developer has been really very cooperative in working with all of those groups to move this project forward. But really to thank you to the to the people that come out and vote for the zoning changes that recognize that these, you know, incremental things um lead to the long term planning, the better roadways. Um in, you know, down the line, there's going to probably be more sidewalks and streetscape improvements. And this is really the beginning of some really tremendous impact in that area. So I'm very excited about it and uh wish we could fast forward to see what it looks like in ten years, but it looks like it's well on its way. If anybody um has no questions, if somebody would like to make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding um for the Sawmill Village Compact Neighborhood on Foundry Street.
Barger.
Second, Broussard.
So that's Barger Broussard. Craig?
Barger, yes.
Broussard, yes.
King, yes.
Liam, yes.
And full Janetti, yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
So on to the next one, which is a discussion and vote on the memorandum of understanding regarding the Blackledge forty B on Union Street, also uh with Rick Lincoln.
Sure. So uh just a refresher here. Uh last fall, this project proposal came before the select board, uh at which point the board voted uh to support it advancing through the design uh process uh towards what's called the project eligibility stage where they submit an application to mass housing at the state level. That uh submittal kicks off a comment window uh during which the town uh through its select board can provide feedback to the state on the project. Um the planning department and I pulled together a financial impact analysis back, I believe in October that uh garnered feedback from a variety of town boards, committees, and departments uh on the conceptual proposal of this uh project. That was brought forward of a board. Um it's attached again in this packet for your reference. Uh and the board voted to support advancing this project provided that uh the developer negotiate a uh mitigation agreement with myself and Dottie um prior to the close of that project eligibility period. So that is what is included in your packet, that project eligibility uh comment period closes uh towards the end of this month. So some high level highlights here and um you will test me on my detail uh again, I'm sure. Uh in addition to providing um affordable uh and diverse housing uh to the community and increasing our SHI itself, a a goal that's compatible with our Affordable Housing Production Plan uh and the envisioned Eastern Master Plan. Um this development agreement uh includes um funding for key public safety and public health related items that were identified in the financial impact analysis. Uh including um a quarter million dollars in funding uh for a feasibility study for a future joint public safety and public works facility. That's something that uh Dave Field identified as a a possible solution to some really significant building needs we have across the town government for our public works and public safety. Uh this project would secure funding for that critical first step. Uh and also uh one million, two hundred and twenty five thousand in uh mitigation for uh fire EMS and public health spread out over five years um beginning uh upon occupancy, but no later than May of two thousand and twenty three. Um so it was a roughly two hundred and forty five thousand annual uh two hundred and forty five thousand dollar annual contributions to support uh EMS and public health in the community for five years. Developer is also committed to fund the necessary water infrastructure upgrades as one of the things that came up uh at the earlier conceptual stage was discussions about wastewater and water treatment uh that preferably the city of Brockton would make sewer available. Unfortunately, the city has elected not to do that. Um so the feedback provided by TPW that has now been incorporated into this mitigation agreement is that if they are to do onsite um wastewater uh disposal that they should get water from Easton. So they need to upgrade some water infrastructure. That's estimated at roughly three hundred thousand dollars. They will do that um with the guidance and oversight of Public Works. Uh so in total, uh the direct and indirect mitigations are just shy of two million. It's roughly one point eight million. This is in addition to the estimated three hundred thousand in annual property and excise taxes that this project is expected to generate as well as nearly two hundred thousand in building permit revenue. Um Dottie and I both were involved in those negotiations. I believe I'm at the board's charge. I'm happy to answer questions about the MOU. And if it's about water infrastructure, I'm gonna punt to Dave.
Connor, um Brockton is not interested in in working with the developer on this project. Is that what I'm hearing?
Correct.
So that was the only question I had. I I'm disappointed, but um it is what it is.
Uh?
Well, go ahead.
No, Matt, I telling you to go next, Tom.
Yes, Tim, go. Uh so I also echo select uh board member Barger's disappointment. I think that we are we express, or I'll speak to myself, I express um certainly a desire that it would uh be treated in Brockton um just out of concern. I believe there are water sources that are close by. So I guess the the two questions that I have uh David, probably for you. One is um in terms of the water needs going to this uh particular development, does it place any strain on that particular well or the service of water for that particular district um that we should be concerned about?
No, um so our Water Management Act permit uh has a much higher limit than we are currently utilizing now. And it's that way for developments like this specifically to allow for these type of developments. So we have the infrastructure um uh water wise. It's just the specific water main from Clara Howard to this development would need to be upgraded to an eight inch.
Understood. And for the the layman, layperson like me, um how how do we help the community feel uh confident in the safety of the size of this development and the therefore the waste treatment that would be going on or or um in the septic fields that might go on at this particular development?
Yeah. So Title V is uh if anyone's had to replace the septic system, they know Title V is very stringent. And when you get to large systems, DEP is involved. So our health department and DEP would both permit this. Um so I I'd be very comfortable that if they can permit it, that it will be done safely.
Those were just the questions that I had, Dottie and David. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Great. Chuck, any questions? You're on mute, though.
Only one. I don't know if it's incorrect of me to go back and ask about what the planning board had done in regard to this project, but I recall visiting that scene a a few months ago and then trying to drive my car out of the existing exit at that time. And especially to the right, it looked incredibly dangerous uh for for traffic coming that way and for me esca- escaping at that location. Uh do you know, David, anything, any narrative that took place in the planning board about that digress?
I I don't know about this specific planning board meeting, but the current plans do account for that. Um they're moving the entrance uh when you come out to the left as far as they can go. So not the existing entrance, but they're gonna move it over. They're also gonna take a site distance uh triangle and clear a bunch of the land to improve site distance.
Okay.
Current plan.
Could be um, I should have clarified this.
In the packet.
Where where you are with this is similar to Sawmill, but this is not um a permit approval. Uh this is making a decision about the mitigation agreement. This would still need to go to the zoning board for uh public hearings and very, very detailed peer reviewed engineering analysis. They have already done a traffic engineering study which was shared with the board uh in advance to look at not only uh sightlines, but also uh level of service um for that area. So all of those types of detailed things, whether it's permitting for Title V um water infrastructure upgrades, uh sightlines, that type of thing, it still needs to go through a pretty rigorous amount of of permitting. This doesn't skip the line or circumvent the developer's authority to satisfy all of those um concerns.
Okay, thank you.
First off, I think 1.8 million for a mitigation agreement is, is excellent. So well done in negotiating that. But I'm going to piggyback on what Craig had mentioned with the water. My, my largest concern is, is the discharge, not the supply, but the discharge. And I know that Title V and DEP and they'll all be involved and. You know, that's all good and well. So, but my question though is, is the notion of tying into sewer. Done deal?
Yes. All effort possible was applied and we did not succeed. So the board made clear that was your preference. I did my best. Dottie did hers.
Well, I know it's.
Sometimes we can't.
My disappointment isn't with this board with you at all. It's with Brockton. And I'll be honest about it. There's no re, I don't see a response.
No, I know. I do think it's important, though, for the public or, you know, the press covering this. To Dave's point. We all are in agreement that we would have preferred, frankly, because it's just common sense. The sewer infrastructure is right there. But the board's role with an MOU here, or this being a 40B, does not give it some sort of. carte blanche to not have to meet the same. Standards any other house would or development would. For, for, for its wastewater. So. I don't, I'm not, I'm not marginalizing those concerns. Those are legitimate concerns of any development. I just, particularly with a subject like 40B where folks can sometimes be predisposed to not be. Amenable to them. I, I don't want the conception to be that this somehow is not subject to the same standards. 40Bs do get to circumvent local zoning, but they still need to comply with wetlands and, and, and things like that.
So I'll mention that a couple of months ago around the holidays. I know there was a lot of snow on the ground. I went out to the site with Rick Lincoln and the abutter. The abutter had some questions about, you know, the sightlines and so forth and his property and. How tall the buildings were going to be and, you know, he, of course, wants to mitigate. People looking down into his backyard. And so. He and Rick and I walked the property. We spent a lot of time out there looking at things. Rick was very amenable to working to make sure that there was certain vegetation. They were going to work together to figure out what was the best kind of vegetation. To be able to be planted there to. You know, to make it so that there was a privacy buffer between his property and, and the, the development. And, you know, Rick was very gracious and I have to say that the abutter was such a. Such a nice guy and really had some great questions and. It was really nice to stand back and kind of see the conversation between the two of them to mutually talk about what was going to be. Working for both of them. So I, I want to give a shout out to the abutter for, you know, his cooperation. Super nice guy, had some really interesting things on his property and really great stories to tell about why. Living there means so much to him and, you know, his history of living in that neighborhood. So I really appreciated that opportunity. One of the things that Rick said about the entrance is that he was going to be doing some work. They had to change the sightline and make the entrance beautiful. And possibly doing something, potentially moving the house if it needed to be moved. So. He's, he's already looking at those ideas as far as, as the entranceway. And that was, you know, good to see also. So again, I, I share everybody's disappointment that we couldn't. You know, get Brockton to agree to work with the developer on the sewer. But, you know, all the efforts went in and I think that it's a very good relationship. With the developer, the neighbors and this board. So I look forward to seeing. How this goes through the Zoning Board of Appeals and, and the planning process. If anybody would like to make a motion to accept the memorandum of understanding. For a Blackledge 40B as outlined in our packet.
So moved, Barger.
Second, Broussard.
Barger, yes.
Broussard, yes.
King, yes. Lamb, yes.
And full Janetti, yes. Thank you so much, everyone.
Dottie, could I just ask the, I should have made it more clear of the packet. I apologize, but as. Motion, if the board is willing to authorize Dottie on your behalf to submit a letter of support to mass housing.
And I highlighted it right here, so I remembered to ask it and I didn't. So thank you for catching that. If somebody would like to make a motion to authorize me to submit a supportive letter of response on the board's behalf to mass housing. Associated with the P E L comment period.
I'll move with Barger.
Second, Broussard.
Barger Broussard.
Barger, yes.
Broussard, yes.
King, yes.
Lamb, yes.
And full Janetti, yes. Great. Thank you. Thanks for the catch, Connor. All right, next is. Discussion and vote for agreement of wastewater collection, treatment and disposal between the Town of Easton and Queesit Commons. WWTF LLC and Queesit Commons LLC. WWTF wastewater treatment facility. I was a little slow on that.
I know. We're reading quickly, probably thinking we're making some strange typos here. So attached to the board's packet is a agreement between the Town of Easton and Queesit Commons and their LLCs. For an ongoing operations and maintenance agreement for a private wastewater treatment plant that currently receives and treats via public sewer collected at the Queesit Sewer District. This is a much more detailed agreement related to, you know, defining capital versus operating financial assurance mechanisms and various items associated with the. Department of Environmental Protection's permit for that treatment plant. This supplements the existing development agreement as amended with the Town of Easton and Doug King. That development agreement, sort of like the MOUs we just talked about, were really kind of 10,000-foot view. Stipulations, money will go to this for that. But didn't get into the weeds of breaking out the ongoing. Operations. So that's what this agreement is. It's been negotiated. For quite some time with myself, Public Works, Woodard and Curran, Doug King, his engineers. And it, it lays out the relationship moving forward. The Select Board can authorize this for a term of three years in order to extend that more than that, which I would recommend, given the nature of the service, which is a very. Long-term one, which is sewer treatment. Town meeting would need to vote to authorize a long-term term. So there's an associated warrant article for the spring that would, that would effectuate that. So Dave Field and I are here to answer any questions. This has also been reviewed by council with significant input from them as well. I would recommend your approval.
Questions, Craig?
Where, I, I don't have it in front of me now, Connor, but it talked about if we reach 80% of the 50,000 gallon capacity. Something hap, it triggers something else. Is that, am I, did I read that correctly?
There's a provision in there, I believe, and Dave, keep me from getting in trouble. Please, it's your role tonight. Where if we are reaching, nearing our total capacity. So the way it works is Queesit has. A, a certain amount of capacity. They are, they can eventually build 150,000 gallons a day of capacity. Right now they're built to get 100,000. We own and purchased 50,000. So once we start getting near the limit of our reserved amount of capacity, we need to develop a flow management plan. And submit it to them to show that we basically have a plan in place to make sure that we don't overextend. Our flow and exceed what we are authorized to use.
Prior to their going to 150,000 gallons?
No, period. Our, our rights are to 50,000 gallons. Regardless of whether they're at 100 or 150. We have paid for and are entitled to 50,000 gallons per day. So if we were nearing that upper limit. We would have to show them how we're going to control for that so that we don't start overstepping the bounds of our agreement with them. As a practical matter. That is a very long way away because the public buildout of the Queesit Sewer District only allocated. If every single parcel in the public district tied in, which is not mandated. Roughly half of our 50,000 gallons. So that is, that is a very long way from now.
And that was purposeful because we wanted to save the other half of that capacity to, to encourage the development down there. And anybody new that would want to tie into that, if they redeveloped or expanded a property, they would be paying a privilege fee to enter into it. So that's kind of the. The carrot to encourage the, the economic development down in that area.
Right. And, and to be clear, Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's a pretty reasonable request of. The private developer to have this protection in there. Because otherwise, in theory, we would start siphoning away. Flow that they need on site. Dave?
Yeah, and just to shed a little light, that 80% caveat is a requirement from DEP in all wastewater treatment plans. So it's just a pass-through. And it's, again, wastewater is done in your average daily flow and then you have peak flows. So. The peak of our flow can be is 50,000 gallons per day. Our average daily flow would probably be closer to 25 to 30. On a normal operating basis when we're built out. So if we are at 80%, they want to know what we're going to do to manage that, to make sure we don't peak above. The 50,000 gallons. So that's a pretty standard term.
All right. Tom?
I have no questions. Thank you.
Chuck?
I have none. Thank you, Doug.
Mark?
No questions.
All right. I think all questions have been satisfied. If someone would like to make a motion. To enter, to accept the agreement for the wastewater collection, treatment and disposal between the Town of Easton and Queesit Commons.
So moved, Barger.
Second, Broussard.
Barger Broussard.
Barger, yes.
Broussard, yes.
King, yes.
Lamb, yes.
And full Janetti, yes. Thank you. All right, next is.
Sorry, I was going to say, I think, I think Dave has, uh, met his lifeline obligation.
Thank you.
The next item. Stephanie.
Well, I'm excited that I haven't seen any striped lines down the street this week. So that's a good sign that it's going to be warmer 60s by Thursday.
You just jinxed it.
Hi, Stephanie.
Hi, Stephanie.
Good evening. How is everybody?
Great. So we are going to get a, an update on the Queesit Commons 40, our development agreement.
So a couple of weeks ago. Select Board Member Broussard was asking what the status was of development and in particular. Building B at Queesit Commons. That project was supposed to start construction in 2018. I think the board members may recall, because I think it was also discussed at a Select Board meeting. That the developer came to the Planning Board, I think it was the end of 2017, looking for a change in the design. He wanted, instead of building one building, he wanted to build two. That were connected and then start construction on one half. And then the other was talking about having. Maybe a restaurant in one portion and adding eight additional units. As you can see from the memo that gives you a brief summary in your packet. Work on that building has not commenced. Construction has not commenced. In 2019, they did pull a foundation permit. But there has been no construction activity to date. What I'd like to bring to your attention is that the developers agreement has a clause that basically says, or. Language that says the construction sequencing. Are based on King's best efforts and are subject to receipts of all permits and economic and weather conditions. Being favorable. What Mr. King has indicated is that. He, he feels that economic conditions are such. That after building. Building D and E, which were the condominiums. The sales of the condominiums were slow. He needed to sell. The majority of those before he could start construction on Building B. So to date, 30 units of the condominiums have sold. And 12 are currently being rented in a to-own program. And several of those will start. Closing in fall of 2022. He also is supposed to be working on construction for Building I. That's the commercial building at the front of Queesit Commons. And he has been pursuing and, and trying to get interest in that building. The latest update was that he has a veterinarian who's interested in moving their practice into that location. But has been holding off due to COVID, COVID-19. So, and I just want to point out that attached to the memorandum. What I've done, we've been tracking the progress on this project. Using the. The spreadsheet that I attached. And that gives a complete status on. It shows all the deliverables that were agreed to as part of the project. Gives the timeframe and due dates, who's the responsible party and provides a current status.
That's great information, Stephanie.
Very clear and easy to follow. So thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Any questions from the board? Greg, Tom?
You know, the only thing I just pointed out, I think, is Building I was originally slated to start in September of 2016. And I know it's tough economic conditions in some respects. I know property and, and. Homes to live in in Easton are few and far between. So hopefully that enables. The developer in this particular case to get some of those necessary sales of the condos that are required to help support the next phases of the building. But. Living conditions in Easton are scarce right now. So hopefully that's an opportunity for. Progress and, and development to continue and to see this parcel reach its full potential. That would be fantastic. And. Stephanie, you went above and beyond an update. I think I echo what was said by Dottie and Craig. This is just, this comparison is crystal clear and. It's very helpful to get the update on what's there.
Thank you.
And thanks for asking for the update, Tom. I think it's important, you know, all of these wheels keep spinning and we don't. We know they're happening. We, we know there's things going on, but it's really important to make sure that we do check in and especially to let, you know. Let the people at home know that these things are still happening and ongoing. So these updates are really important. Chuck, any questions?
I have none additional. Thank you, Stephanie.
Mark?
No additional questions. Thank you.
All right, well, there's no vote required of this, but I really appreciate you coming in, Stephanie, and, and the due diligence that you put in. And all our fingers are crossed that Mr. King is able to move forward on this and as conditions improve for him.
And we'll continue to communicate with him.
Great. Thank you.
We have no doubt, Stephanie.
All right, next up is a vote to authorize the town office's grant application and preservation restrictions. With the Massachusetts Historical Commission.
I believe Wayne Beitler is being moved into the panel to. To this now. There he is.
Hey, Wayne.
There I am. How are you? Doing well. Thanks very much. Thanks for accommodating me at tonight's meeting. You may remember that we applied last spring, in spring 2020. For a grant from the Massachusetts Historical Commission for a Massachusetts Preservation Projects Fund grant. To help defray the cost of the exterior work at Town Hall. And we were not successful. They announced a second round or an additional round, and so we're going to apply again. My theory being that, you know, you get 0% of, you know, the grants you, you never apply for. And they have a very lengthy application with a lot of required documentation. Yeah, I think Connor has looked at it last year. There's, there's a lot in there. And one of the things they require. Is the Select Board to vote to authorize. Someone to sign a contract with MHC and then also a separate vote to authorize someone to sign a preservation restriction with MHC. You know, should, should the project go forward, should the grant be awarded. And. The. Signature by town clerk. the, uh, signature by town clerk also has to be in blue ink. That's, that's our contract requirement. So you may remember that at the November thirtieth special town meeting appropriating the money for the Town Hall project, folks also authorized a preservation restriction to be conveyed on Town Hall. So we do have that sort of public authority to do that. So this is sort of a ministerial ask, and I'm, you know, very happy to ask, to answer any questions anyone might have about this.
Mark, you have a question?
I do have a question. Wayne, you, you, you should have just a standing, uh, you know, attendance with the select board, because you hear so often, you do such a great job. But I'm, I'm, you know, I'm sorry to hear that the grant, we not, we did not receive the grant. But when you don't receive a grant, do they give you reasons why you don't get, win the grant? There's, I'm going down a road, which I'll get to.
No, I did. I, so I, um, I did reach out to them and had a very good and productive conversation with staff person. And we were at the exact cutoff. Had they had more money, we would have been next in line. So we were at the, the top of the, the list of those who did not get funded. So we came very close, which was, which was good. A couple of things that we were not as competitive on, we're not really going to be able to improve this time around either. One of them is need, you know, if we have appropriated the money, then do we actually need the grant? Which, uh, you know, I, I can see their perspective, but, um, you know, since it's a reimbursement grant, of course, we have to appropriate the funds first. And then the second thing, and this is something we're not going to be able to get around either, is we did not have, you know, bid ready, development ready plans and specs for the project. But of course, getting plans and specs for a project of this size is a pretty expensive proposition. So of course, we did not and will not do that until we appropriate the money, which we did. And then that's next on our list in the next several months to get the plans and specs. And so we're not going to have them in time for the, the grant, um, application deadline. You know, that said, we did come very close last time. And a lot of it is contingent on, you know, what the, the, the sort of universe of applicants look like. And there's really no way to game that out in advance.
Okay. I was just, I was going down the road of, what can we do? This go around that we didn't do before to better position ourselves. And I'm sure you're already thinking, you are already thinking in those terms. I and, and I know that, but I had to ask. And then my last question is, this grant, is it a fixed dollar amount?
We are going to ask, so the, the maximum ask, you, they have, I forget, I think it's like eight hundred thousand dollars total for this round. The maximum ask for a construction project is a hundred thousand. So my intent is to ask for the hundred thousand. They can and do reduce that. You know, if, if it seems warranted from their, their perspective. And I indicated we would certainly be open to a grant if it had to be reduced from the hundred thousand, you know, any, any amount, of course, does help.
I thank you for all the work you do. You, you're, you're, so much money comes into Easton because of the work you do.
You know, we try. We, uh, we turn over every rock we can find.
You do. You do.
Any other questions? Comments? All right. So, um, we would need a motion to authorize, I would assume it would be me, um, to be the signatory.
I think Connor, um, we could authorize Connor.
Oh, okay.
Or we could authorize both might be useful. What do you think, Connor?
As long as, if a request of M H Q, not M H Q, sorry, MHC is that the board votes authorize, which in and of itself is strange. Most agencies allow.
Yes.
Do it, but, um, we can just make sure, sparing you having to come back, we can just authorize Dottie. I think is safe. Dottie's the chair. So the, the, the request in the packet is a recommend the board vote to authorize, in this case, Dottie as signatory for a potential contract with Massachusetts Historical Commission and to authorize Dottie for a potential preservation restriction on the property.
And I can update those forms that appeared in draft form in your packet for execution and ask the town clerk to sign those.
Is that two separate motions? Connor, can we do it in one or?
Can do it in one, as, as long as it's clear.
Someone like to move?
Sure, I'll, uh, so moved, Barger.
Second, Broussard.
Barger Broussard?
Barger, yes?
Broussard, yes.
King, yes. I am, yes.
I'm full Janetti, yes. Great, thank you. Wayne, I do have to, uh, nothing to do with this one, but I drove by Electric Ave and kind of peeked down to see how the house was coming down there, the Habitat for Humanity. And it's really coming along, so, um, pretty exciting. And I think they're still looking for volunteers. So if anybody is interested, go on Google Habitat for Humanity Easton and see if there's a list. They were looking for, for individual volunteers. And then also if you've had an organization like uh, the Lions Club had a day where some of their members volunteered. And I helped that day and it was really, really awesome. It was, uh, they let me play with tools and, you know. I was a little sore for a couple of days after. It was great.
Got hurt.
Nobody got hurt. So, um, there's something for everybody, uh, well, no matter what your skill level. So I'd encourage people to definitely look for that. And, uh, you know, that, that's another project that just required a lot of vision and really to put that together with amazing work on behalf of your department and the Affordable Housing Trust, so.
Thank you. And yeah, thanks for the, uh, the plug for volunteers. That's, that's very much appreciated.
Terrific. Well, thanks for being here tonight. It was good to see you. Connor, did you have a, a question?
Yeah, Dottie, if I just could, for the board's benefit and Wayne, if you have anything to add, feel free. But as far as the status of this project, so this is a grant ask, but as Wayne has mentioned, this, the funding's already been appropriated to advance this exterior renovation project of the Town Hall, which is super exciting. Dave Field has worked with me and we're, we've appointed a designer selection committee. Uh, for a project of this size, you need a group of folks to review, um, designer bids in response to requests for qualifications. Uh, that committee has Dave Field, Greg Swan and Stephanie, but also members from some uh, boarding committees that have good crossover here. So you have Ed Hands from C P A Committee, uh, Amy Spencer from Historical and Larry Moa from Municipal Building. So that's a really good team. Uh, a cross sector of, uh, of our professional staff and our volunteers who've worked on this in one way or another. Um, so those responses for designers are due in April. They'll make a recommendation to me, uh, and I believe through to the board, uh, because of the contract, uh, amount uh, in May, and we'll keep this project moving. So if we can have a grant, thank you. That'd be great, Wayne. Uh, but if not, we're, we're going to be, you know, rolling ahead one way or another.
Awesome. Thank you, everybody. Really appreciate it. Have a great night.
You too. So we are already at the point for the standing COVID update. Connor, take it away.
Thank you, Dottie. I want to, um, grab that presentation. It is not showing up. Sorry, if you give me one moment.
I'm just glad technical issues happened to other people while we're Zoom calls in addition to myself.
Awesome. I think I'm the key of that, Tom.
Okay, okay. I think we are good here. We have a screen up for everyone. Great. Uh, so thank you, Dottie. Uh, as is, uh, we're going on a full year of this now. Standing update to the board on where things stand, uh, regarding the pandemic nationally, regionally and here in Easton, how it's informing, um, what our ongoing response efforts are. So United States remains the kind of epicenter of a pandemic. We're nearing twenty-nine million cumulative cases. Five hundred and twenty-five thousand, uh, deaths. The rolling case average is thankfully declining, dipping below sixty thousand for a first time in quite some time. Uh, the rolling seven day death average is also declining, although still obviously quite high at just shy of seventeen hundred. And the percent positive rate is also declining, thankfully. Uh, this graph visualizes, um, coming down from that steep, uh, and, and brutal peak of cases in the United States during the holidays. They continue to trend downward, thankfully. And we're, we're, we're moving in a much, much better direction, thankfully, but, uh, still nearly twice as high as we were back in September. Some of that's obviously due to the disparity in testing availability. And then thankfully, other, uh, more controllable factors are still moving in the right direction. Hospitalizations continue to decline. They peaked at nearly a hundred and thirty thousand uh, Americans in the hospital, uh, over the holidays, and that's down to forty-six thousand today. That figure was at sixty-two thousand, the last we met two weeks ago. So we dropped another, um, what, Tom, uh, seventeen roughly thousand, um, out of a hospital in the past two weeks. So that is a positive movement uh, that we're all excited to see. Um, this is from COVID Act Now. They aggregate various data points to visualize COVID spread uh, based on daily new cases, uh, the, uh, infection rates and positive test rate. Um, risk level still elevated. We want to see green everywhere, but it's moving in the right direction. This was two weeks ago. Um, so the amount of states in the, the red and more severe area is declining, thankfully. Here in Massachusetts, trends are mirroring, uh, those, uh, bigger picture trends I just touched on nationally. Uh, Massachusetts is nearing five hundred and sixty thousand cumulative cases, uh, over sixteen thousand residents of the Commonwealth have lost life to COVID. The fourteen day average incidence rate per hundred thousand in the state is twenty-one. And the seven day average percent positive rate has really come down in Massachusetts, which is great. Um, that's at one point six six percent. This is a visualization of the, that test rate. Johns Hopkins University pulls this together. When, uh, on the far right is in the green, that means it is trending downward. They peaked, uh, uh, over the winter, uh, as we are all aware, and they've been declining, thankfully. Although we still have a little way to go. Uh, hospitalizations in Massachusetts, just like in the nation, have been declining, thankfully, since the holiday surge. We had over twenty-two hundred, uh, residents of the Commonwealth in the hospital, uh, in the holidays. Itself not as severe as a four thousand plus in the spring. And thankfully, that is continuing to move down. We're at six sixty-five, which is itself an improvement. We were at nine hundred and twenty-seven at the last meeting. So again, cut almost a third of that off since then. So it's heading in the right direction, which is a nice, uh, a nice to be able to say that, uh, because it's been a long time since I have been able to. Uh, similarly, the risk assessment on a municipal basis is improving. So Easton is in the yellow. Um, we obviously want to get back towards green, uh, but we're heading in that direction, thankfully. Uh, so this is the, uh, what we're looking at now. Here was two weeks ago and two weeks before that. So that really brings into relief. This was February fourth and here is March fourth. So it's a, we're moving in the right direction, which is, um, exciting and relieving. Cases in Easton, this graph is, uh, not all that useful anymore because it has stretched for so long, uh, but cumulative. Where were seventeen hundred cases, uh, in the course of this pandemic, uh, seventeen forty-one. Thankfully, that rate of growth is finally slowing. And, uh, that, since your last meeting, you were at sixteen seventy-six, we're now at seventeen forty-one. And, um, at our last check with our vital records, sixty residents have lost their life to COVID. This graph, um, visualizes a few, uh, it kind of consolidates a lot of the metrics into one clean place. The, uh, bars represent, uh, our, uh, daily new cases per hundred thousand. Um, that's pulled from the D P H. The color coding is the D P H's risk assessment, green, uh, yellow and red. And then that dotted line, although it's becoming hard to see on this scale, is the test positive rate. Um, so we are trending in the right direction. Uh, cases are beginning to drop, and our test positive rate has dropped significantly. This is our weekly new cases. You do see a little bit of a pickup there for this most recent week. Um, hopefully that's just an outlier. Uh, testing has been, uh, increasing. Uh, we'll obviously keep an eye on it. But overall, the broader trends do look to be moving in the right direction and certainly an improvement from uh, January where we were nearing, you know, we were well over a hundred cases a week, every single week. Our test positive rate, uh, has plummeted, uh, since for worst of, uh, the winter surge. Some of that is certainly attributable to Stone Hill's ongoing testing, but a lot of this follows broader trends. So right now, the statewide average test positive rate is one point nine three percent and in Easton, it is down to one point one four percent. Which is, which is a significant improvement from only seven weeks ago when it was over ten percent. Um, so that is moving in the right direction. Um, so right now, our, uh, average daily incidence rate of COVID is slightly above, uh, Massachusetts average and our test positive rate is slightly below it. This message has been repeated a million times, but obviously is, you know, even though trends are starting to improve, which is wonderful, um, and restrictions are relaxing, uh, some of the economy is reopening and folks, some folks are getting access to vaccines, which is great, uh, you know, continue in, in public, uh, to do the right thing, follow the governor's mask orders, uh, keep your distance when you can and make sure you keep practicing good health hygiene. But things are, uh, improving, uh, which is, uh, really I feel that I should sound happier, but it's been a, a long, a long year or so. Um, and we still have a ways to go, but things are moving in the right direction, which is great. So vaccine update, um, we're still on the same timeline for the Commonwealth. There's the folks who are eligible for vaccines and determined by the governor, uh, changes relatively frequently. Including almost on a week to week basis. The timeframes are estimates, uh, and people should really head to, uh, the state's website on this for a central database on, on who's eligible and how to get vaccines, which would be mass.gov slash COVID vaccine. Uh, statewide vaccine data. So obviously, these are just some, uh, data points. It's not, I'm not adding a a value judgment to it one way or another, just using some, uh, information available from Bloomberg. They have a pretty great, uh, vaccine tracker that, uh, looks at vaccine distribution efforts around the world. The United States, um, has, uh, been improving its distribution, uh, pretty aggressively. We're averaging over two million doses being administered in America every day right now, which is exciting. And hopefully we'll continue to see that in, in, increase now that Johnson and Johnson has emergency use authorization. Um, that's pretty huge. Uh, percent of the United States who has received their first dose is just under eighteen percent, uh, just over nine percent is fully vaccinated. Again, the, uh, availability of the single shot regimen is going to help improve that fully, uh, vaccinated figure over time. And that's going to be, um, pretty exciting stuff. Uh, so Massachusetts, um, total doses administered is just over two point one million. Uh, over twenty percent of the state has had at least a first shot and nearing ten percent is fully vaccinated. Uh, we're looking at a daily throughput of just under sixty thousand. So the, the Commonwealth is slightly ahead of the United States, um, on those, uh, percent of populations accessing first and second doses. Uh, so the state's phasing, the most recent announcement, I believe last week, I think the morning after the president announced that teachers around the United States could access vaccines at certain pharmacies that have federal contracts. Uh, Governor Baker announced that starting this Thursday, teachers, uh, childcare workers and school staff will be eligible to attempt to book a vaccine appointment at Massachusetts, uh, mass, uh, vaccine sites using the, the COVID, uh, website, which was mass.gov slash COVID vaccine. All other subgroups in phase two, including, um, other essential workers listed in the same group as educators are still, uh, timing to be determined by the, the state. Uh, again, uh, eligible groups, whether you're over seventy-five, sixty-five and above, uh, or starting this Thursday, uh, K to twelve worker, uh, should visit mass.gov slash COVID vaccine or call two-one-one uh, for assistance. Uh, update on vaccination efforts here locally, as the board is aware, there's quite a bit of coverage of this, um, in mid-February. The, uh, Governor Baker administration announced that it would cease delivering any new vaccine doses to cities and towns, uh, including us to run our own clinics effective March first. Part of that announcement, uh, consolation was, uh, that we would at least receive our second doses. Unfortunately, that was, uh, not, uh, as simple as the memorandum would have indicated. Uh, delivery and receipt of those second doses was extraordinarily challenging. Uh, they were delayed, uh, at the last minute, uh, multiple times. They have finally today arrived. Which may beg the question, but how did you administer two hundred and fifty second shots last week, which we did? Uh, the answer is that Chief Partridge, uh, thankfully has some great relationships and Dr. Muse at Brockton Hospital was kind enough Wednesday evening. Wednesday evening, uh roughly sixteen hours before our already delayed clinic was scheduled to begin when we learned from DPH, we would not be getting our vaccines after all. Dr. Muse was helpful enough to transfer the necessary doses uh to the Eastern Fire Department and Health Department so that we were able to run that clinic uh on Thursday. Um, so thank you very much to Brockton Hospital and Dr. Muse uh for that loan um of vaccines, uh which we will transfer back today. Now that we received our doses. Um, the clinic went great, fire department did great, health department did wonderful, uh CERT, MRC, volunteers. I can't say enough uh good things about our staff. And the volunteers um who helped out with the clinic, two hundred and fifty doses administered uh in over an eight hour day and they did a great job. We're very proud of their work. Uh, tomorrow, there's another uh second dose clinic. We do have our vaccines in hand. Which will be from ten to one thirty, a hundred second doses for other seventy five and older folks who we took care of in February will be administered. Uh, and then starting this Thursday, uh we are looking at roughly ninety uh first doses of a vaccine to be administered onsite uh at the Housing Authority. By Eastern Fire and Board of Health Personnel uh for residents uh of uh the Housing Authority. So um. Again, I can't say enough thank you to uh our uh fire, health uh teams and leadership and our our volunteers at CERT, MRC and. Everyone else uh for their efforts to get these vaccines out and and also their uh night jobs uh very literally of lobbying uh and working to secure these doses. Just a general update, uh we are, Easton is in in preliminary discussions with uh some regional partners um exploring regional vaccine sites. That's in a very early stage, but uh if that uh bears any fruit, I will of course uh let the board know and the public and we'll keep. We'll keep working with the tools we have available to us. So this is our um. Probably soon to be uh uh expired uh vaccine chart. Uh, blue are first doses, red are second doses. As of this weekend, uh EMA has administered a cumulative seven hundred and sixty doses of Moderna. Four thirty of those are first doses, three thirty are second. We have a one hundred percent administration rate. We have wasted zero doses. Our second dose clinic uh for a handful, about a hundred of our seniors again is tomorrow. And unless there's a change of course from the Commonwealth, uh these will be some of the last clinics we run. So that is what I have uh prepared. Thank you and uh thank you to everyone for supporting those clinics and uh the public for continuing to do the right thing and. Uh, try to get through um covid, so I'm happy to answer any questions the board has.
See everybody, hold on a second.
Here, sorry.
Questions from the board, Craig?
I don't have any questions. I just want to once again thank you and 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 your staff for the incredible work you guys have done. Um, I don't think we can say it enough times um to acknowledge uh the efforts on behalf of our citizens. So thank you, Connor.
Thanks, Craig. Tom?
Uh Connor, I would just a couple of points you made. One is about the the new vaccine from uh Johnson and Johnson. I think. You're spot on in terms of the game changing capability that it has. Single dose uh refrigeration requirements are are much easier, very. Normal refrigeration relative to uh the special temperatures of the previous two types of vaccines. Um, and there is no bad vaccine. That's that's my opinion. I think a lot of people will state that. And so uh the quicker we can get vaccinated, the better. Uh, and I do want to point out, uh I think it's uh certainly okay. Uh, for you to be wary, it's okay to not necessarily be as happy as one might think about their results lately. Um, it is certainly okay to be wary. We should all be diligent uh and continue to be as safe as possible. Uh, I do want to encourage you and I think we've done just an amazing job to continue to think about what the next chapter will look like as we exit this pandemic. And 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 helping people navigate towards and out of where we're at. Um, you know, we're talking about vaccines now and. Uh, for so many presentations, that wasn't even a slide of yours. So uh there will be more slides to come and I just want to give you. Uh, like Craig said, in in our entire community and certainly all the uh departments, services, school system uh that's in it. Just a tremendous amount of credit for helping lead our residents through this very difficult time in the best way possible. So as always, thank you for your efforts.
Thank you for the support.
Chuck, you there?
That's Craig says that we can't think of enough times, can you? I'm here.
There you go.
Do you mean hear me or?
It's a little staticky and your picture's frozen.
Okay, uh the. Can you hear me? Um, as Craig says, we can't times, um but uh I've I've also seen. Still frozen?
Yeah, well, your your voice is also freezing too, Chuck, so we we only can hear a couple of words.
Strange, he was doing well most of the night. Um, I credit the staff for, yeah. I credit the stat Craig and I I credit I credit Connor and the staff, not only for their professionalism in the in this. Endeavor, but also their the passion that they've shown. I appreciate it so much.
Thanks, Chuck. Mark?
You know, I know, I know that the the state kind of ripped the carpet out from underneath a lot of communities a few weeks ago. But if you look at all the people that you positively impacted already, then it was all worth it. It was all worth it. So uh that's that's what I I'm looking at now. Um, look at those numbers, all the numbers added up. All your efforts, everything you've done, it was worth it to positively impact those people. And uh, you know, kudos to you in chief for thinking very quick on your feet. Uh, to get those two hundred and fifty doses. Um, I I think I heard how that all went down and um. I I really tip my cap to you, thinking outside the lines, making it happen. Um, if it were not for that quick thinking. Uh, what were those people on day twenty eight or close to? Um, that wouldn't, they wouldn't have their second doses.
Yeah, the state's recommendation was that we could explain to folks that twenty eight days is a guidance and not a.
You made the right call. Well done.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks to the the chief and thanks to Dr. Muse. That are a leader regionally.
So every year, um the uh chairs of the boards and committees have to write a year in review to put into the annual report. Mark did his for economic development, so I'll give you a little shout out on that. Um, so when I had to do that a few weeks ago, I went back. As I do to all my agendas and minutes from the beginning of the year and, you know, it's January, the budget. We're just talking about some things. February, there were some little rumblings in the news of something that was going on overseas. A year ago this week, I was on vacation. Um, I was down in Mexico with my family and the the guidance was, you know, to bring some. Uh wipes to wipe down your seatbelt. While I was down there, we had no television and by the middle of the week, I got a call from Connor like. You're not going to believe what's going on. We, you know, the whole world changed by the time I got back. And, you know, the the talk was on March sixteenth of closing the businesses for two weeks while we flatten the curve. Two weeks and, you know, some news sources were saying we might still be in trouble by the spring. And and then, you know, it a couple of weeks later, um some were saying we, this might still be going on in the fall. And no one could imagine that because the kids were out of school and well, they'll certainly be back in September. And then as the news progressed. You know, it's a year later and everything that our businesses and our families and our kids had to endure that period of time is just. No, I could have never in my wildest dreams ever imagined this. The amount of work that has gone into. You know, zigging and zagging and and every time an announcement comes out to to just figure out how to implement it and make it happen. It it's just been incredible and, you know, for people on the outside, I think it looks like things have been going pretty smooth, but behind the curtains to see. The the enormous undertaking and the number of people that are involved in this has really just been incredible. So I, you know, like my fellow board members, really want to thank you, Connor and and the staff and all the people involved in that. I also want to give a really big shout out to the the schools and the school committee. You know, there's a lot of controversy happening right now over. Bringing kids back to school and how to do it safely and. There's just no way to please everybody and they're really taking a lot of heat for this. And I just want to remind people that, you know, we're all volunteers. The school committee is volunteers. We're doing this because we love our community, we love our kids and. Everybody's trying to do the right thing. I think everybody is working diligently to use the research and the data and the facts to make. Educated decision. So I would encourage people to to thank these board members and to thank the town staff when they see them. And just really appreciate that, you know, nobody's doing this in their spare time because they have nothing better to do. Um, everybody's really trying to put in the best efforts on this, so um I appreciate it from the town and the school side. And uh hopefully, w- things just continue on the right track uh moving forward and. Um, people will remember to continue to wear their masks and keep keep washing their hands and social maintaining the good social distancing. So that we'll really just get out of this predicament a little bit faster. So thank you for your update, Connor, and um the next item that we have on the agenda is the annual town meeting draft warrant review.
Yes, uh it is that time of year. Um, uh we've had it so frequently feels like, uh which is town meeting time. Uh, the first draft of the annual town meeting warrant was published today. It's available online. It is in your packet and tonight. Um, being the first night of review, I would ask the board to consider inclusion and recommendation of a handful of the more. Uh, standard articles that are ready to go uh this early in the process. I am just gonna make sure I have the right uh notes in front of me for this. If you could just give me one moment, I apologize. So the first uh article uh that you have uh for consideration is acceptance of annual reports. Uh, this is standard town meeting votes to accept the annual report book that you just spoke about, Dottie. Uh, so if the board uh is comfortable. I'd ask for a vote to include and recommend article one.
To include and accept article one. Second, Broussard?
Arju Broussard?
Arju, yes.
Broussard, yes.
Lamb, yes.
And full genetti, yes. Article two.
Uh, article two is spending limits for revolving funds. This is the annual authorization by town meeting on the. Uh, limit uh of revolving funds. Expenses cannot exceed uh this amount. Uh, that is the cap established. This is uh the same as uh typical each year. I would ask the board to vote to uh include and recommend.
Move to include and recommend article two.
Second, Broussard?
Arju Broussard?
Arju, yes.
Broussard, yes.
Lamb, yes.
King, yes.
And full genetti, yes. Article three.
Article three is elected official compensation. Uh, this has to be voted on by town meeting every year. This is the same amount as has been uh the case for uh many, many, many years. It's a housekeeping article uh functionally. Um, if the board is willing, I would ask you to take a vote to include and recommend.
Include, I I've moved to include and recommend article three.
Second, Broussard?
Arju Broussard?
Arju, yes.
Broussard, yes.
Lamb, yes.
King, yes.
And full genetti, yes. Article four.
Article four is a standard article that we include in a warrant uh at this stage, payment of bills from a prior fiscal year. Uh, at this point. There are none, uh so I would only ask for the board to vote to include. There is no need to take a position affirmatively or negatively of a recommendation. So just a motion to include, please.
To uh include article four.
I second that. Broussard?
Arju Broussard?
Arju, yes.
Broussard, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Chuck, can you say that again? We didn't really hear you.
King, yes.
Great, full genetti, yes. Thank you. And article five.
Article five, ag- again, a standard article for annual town meeting. Uh, this time, we don't have any supplemental budget requests. We'll obviously keep an eye on that. As the year advances um towards its conclusion, uh so I would ask for the board to take a motion to include. But there is no need to take a position on this at this time.
Move to include article five.
I second Broussard.
That's Barge Broussard?
Arju, yes.
Broussard, yes.
Lamb, yes.
King, yes.
Full genetti, yes.
Very enthusiastic, yes.
Article nine.
Article nine is a a housekeeping type article that does come up from time to time. This is the rescission of previously authorized debt. Uh, these are uh portions of prior debt authorizations from town meeting that are no longer needed. Uh, this article would uh rescind the excess borrowing authorization to take it off of our books. Uh, I would ask uh if if obviously happy to get any questions, if if there are none, I would ask the board to. Vote to uh include and recommend.
Include and recommend article nine.
Second, Broussard?
Arju Broussard?
Arju, yes.
Broussard, yes.
Lamb, yes.
King, yes.
Full genetti, yes. Article twelve.
Article twelve uh is the associated town meeting article uh for the operations and maintenance agreement the board executed tonight. With uh acoustic commons, as I mentioned, under that discussion item, the select board by statute can execute a three year term on such an agreement. Obviously, we have a uh multi decade investment in that district and uh it would be uh appropriate for town meeting to authorize. Uh, the same. Uh, so this is the corresponding article that would allow the agreement to be extended for up to thirty years. I would ask the board to include and recommend.
Move to include and recommend article twelve.
I second that, Broussard.
Arju Broussard?
Arju, yes.
Broussard, yes.
Lamb, yes.
King, yes.
And full genetti, yes. I know how frustrating it is to have internet delays. I think. Everybody in Chuck's neighborhood must be turning on to watch Jeopardy at seven thirty, so thank you, Chuck, for being patient. So next is town administrator notes. Anything else to add, Connor?
I just want to um say thank you to the board. Uh, we just got through this meeting in less than two hours and you uh advanced some enormous. Uh, multi year uh tens of millions of dollar investments in the community. If I uh was pulling up the elementary school project website, which we haven't updated since the override vote in October of two thousand and nineteen. And the uh target date back then that we told voters is that we hoped to complete design through twenty twenty and. Go through bidding over the holidays and award a contract by March ninth of twenty twenty one. So the fact that we met that, uh Dottie, to your point about um, you know, uh acknowledgement of the really incredibly difficult work. The superintendent of the school committees uh around not just Dr. Cabral and our committee, uh but around the Commonwealth and the country have had to make. Uh, this year with education uh and health, uh things that no one ever really thought they would be doing. That in addition to those incredibly difficult decisions, that, you know, there's no easy answers on these decisions. If there were, we would all make them much sooner. They, the, you know, their leadership was actively engaged in uh the design of this project. I think. The the school planning committee's been meeting for so long. Tom, you were on it as a finance committee member. Isn't that true?
I was way back in the day.
How many, how many years this has been being worked on and for this to stay on schedule. For so long through the amount of disruption that's happened um is really testament to the commitment of a lot of our board and committee members. Uh, the elected leadership in the community, I'm a school committee, I'm a select board, so thank you all. You know, and and where we are today is roughly the same, the same amount of time has passed since that October twenty nineteen town meeting. To today is roughly the same amount of time between today and substantial completion of that building. Which is pretty remarkable. Um, so uh thank you uh to the board, um, you know, advancing that project, these important uh housing uh developments. You know, you 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 mentioned Dottie uh five corners that you would, we would see things popping up in in a few years, but you're already seeing economic activity there. Often folks will say, well, it, you know, it's housing. Whereas for commercial, you know, we now have a a wonderful barbecue place that opened up. Uh, you know, and and think about how remarkable it is for entrepreneurs and business owners to be starting new businesses in this. You know, and think about how remarkable it is for entrepreneurs and business owners to be starting new businesses in this current climate. So that opened up, I believe, in the fall, has been wonderful. And a new construction stand-alone Starbucks was permitted a couple of weeks back. That will be being built there as well. So things are already starting to pop up despite the extraordinary economic uncertainty that we're all grappling with. And I think that speaks volumes to just how incredibly attractive and wonderful that area in this town is because of investments that the board has been making for many, many, many years. So, and the, and the public has been as well. So thank you, thank you all. I know it looks like a routine business agenda as normal. There were some really incredible projects that you're moving forward tonight, so thank you.
Well said, Connor. Any select board notes?
I just want to give a shout out. I know you've done this before, Dottie. I want to give a shout out to the farmer's market and Langwater Farms. My wife and I went on Saturday morning. It was, it was very busy. The vendors were really enthusiastic. The crowds were great. Everybody was wearing masks and staying six foot apart. We picked up some really neat stuff, and I'm looking forward to going back again next Saturday. So I hope everybody takes advantage of that through the end of April.
Thanks, Craig. Anyone else?
I'll make a comment.
Okay, Mark?
So I'm not going to bore everybody again. I will not say economic development or hashtag Easton outside or support local business. I won't say all of those things. But I do want to make a comment about the community and the Blancham School. You know, we talked about all the work everybody's done in the thousands and literally thousands of man-hours that have gone into the creation of this. But I want to point out to community, without the overwhelming support, the actual vote to, to allow this to happen, to vote for that, that override, we wouldn't be here. We wouldn't be having this vote tonight on March eighth, one day before promised. So the community deserves, you know, a huge pat on their back, and they have some amazing things coming.
Well said, Mark. All right, we will go right into the minutes. We have general minutes dated January sixteenth. Right, second. Would you make a motion to accept those minutes?
Don't move, Arju.
Second, Broussard?
Arju Broussard?
Arju, yes.
Broussard, yes.
Lamb, yes.
King, yes.
Enfull Genetti, yes. Well, that wraps it up for tonight. Thank you, everybody. Really appreciate being here tonight. It was a jam-packed agenda and a lot of thoughtful discussion. So we will see you in two more weeks. Good night, everyone.
We have to make a motion.
Oh, yeah. Don't move.
We didn't make a motion.
I did.
Yeah, adjourn.
So that's Arju and Lamb.
Arju, yes.
Broussard, yes.
Lamb, yes.
King, yes.
Enfull Genetti, yes. Thanks. Good, say, good night, everyone.
Be healthy.
Take care.